I call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners to order. First thing tonight, we'll have a prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you would, please bow with me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the good and many gifts that you've given to us. We thank you for the ability to come here in freedom, dear Lord, and conduct the business of this community. We ask your blessings first and foremost on those individuals that stand in the path of the tropical storm, Lord. You know where they are, you know how many will be affected, and you know the outcome already. We ask that you protect those and also protect the men and women that will serve them and protect them, law enforcement, first responders, firefighters, Lord. Go before them and clear their path. On the commissioners, we ask you to please give them wisdom. Help them to make good decisions for the benefit of this community. We will be careful in all of these things to give you the praise, the honor, and the glory, for it is in Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Let us stand. Mr. Cotton, lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the mission with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. If you have not turned your cellphones to vibrate or off, please do so now. We have a couple of people in the audience that I'd like to recognize. Of course, our DOT representative, Ms. Sandra Fountain. We're so glad to have you with us tonight. And of course, the sheriff. We're always glad to have the sheriff in the house. So, thank you both for coming. Also tonight, if you wish to speak, we ask that you sign up in the back. The board affords the audience two opportunities to speak. A public comment, a three-minute segment, and we ask that those comments be restricted to items that are on the agenda. A five-minute comment will be on any item that the board has authority over. After you've signed up, you'll be called in the order that you signed in. Please come forward. Make sure the clerk or the manager has your name and address correctly spelled and that your comments are directed to the board in its entirety, not singling out any one commissioner. We ask that your comments be respectful with no audience participation. Also, too, do not endorse any candidacy or a business. The board reserves comments to any questions you may have at Commissioner comments. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
(Inaudible).
Second?
Second.
All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. This brings us to our first public comment section for three minutes. Mr. Manager, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do. This is the first public comment period. During this public comment period, there is a three-minute time limit. In accordance with the board's rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. All comments must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items on for this meeting during the first public comment session. The first and only individual that signed up to speak is Ms. Pat Walker of 140 Denise Drive, Jacksonville NC. The agenda item is the county budget. Ms. Walker, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I know Paul is looking at me saying, "Well, she's asking for money," but I'm not.
(Laughter) Thank you, Pat.
What I wanted to do, our committee has talked about your first responder memorial and the fact that many of the first responders are or were military and the fact that we had some money left over from our memorial. We thought we would like to give you a check to help finish that memorial. We have a check for $5,000 to give to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.[296.12][296.12](Applause).
Appreciate it. For $5,000, they better kiss you.[314.52][314.52](Laughter). Pat, why don't you introduce the people you have with you?
The people I have with me is our Vice President, Michael Rooney.
(Inaudible).
Paul Siderson is the Vice President, Michael Rooney Treasurer, and Marion Rooney Historian.
And the old codger that Pat's...
He's the president, the foundation.[338.47][338.47](Laughter) He keeps us all straight.
Well, the board is deeply grateful for this. We are in the process of wrapping up our public safety monument, and this will certainly go a long ways to us concluding it. And I personally hope that you and your board members will attend our unveiling.
Thank you. We'd love to.
Before you go anywhere, Pat, don't go nowhere. You knew I was gonna get a word in... Last word on this one. For those of you who don't know, Pat and Lee Walker, they are the driving force behind the Vietnam Memorial. They have worked hard, and I know I've thanked you many times for that. And from one of those Vietnam vets, welcome home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner like to make a comment sort of out of order right now? Thank you. Thank you. There's no words to say how much we appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to bring a check forward? Please do so now.[406.12][406.12](Laughter) Okay, no takers. Item four and item five, Mr. Manager, would you present the agenda to the commissioners?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item four presentations. A, the Southeast Chapter of the American Association of Airport Executives Project of the Year Award. Mr. David Cotton, Deputy County Manager, will present this award to Mr. Chris White, Airport Director and Airport Staff. Mr. Cotton.
It's my privilege to represent the commissioners and Mr. Hennepin County Manager to recognize our airport, which is a tremendous asset to our community. It's truly the gateway that a lot of folks, for the very first time coming into our community, that's essentially our front porch. And what a tremendous asset we have in the Albert J. Ellis Airport. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.[468.41][468.41](Applause). I'd like to accept this award on behalf of the Airport Advisory Board, our Chief Architect, Steve Harrells here, and the half million visitors a year that come out and visit the Albert J. Ellis Airport. Well, thank you very much again.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Item B is the Onslow County Proposed Fiscal Year 1617 Budget Presentation. I'll call on me to present that to the board.
Mayors, it's my pleasure to present this budget message to you on behalf of the many staff that have been working on this for six months. At the beginning and at the conclusion, I want to thank staff for all their diligent work. Department heads, agency heads began over six months ago working on this. Finance, administration, human resources, they've all done a tremendous job in bringing this to you this evening. I was thinking about it, this is actually the seventh budget that I presented to the board. And certainly you in this board or prior configurations of boards have heard many other county budgets. This one presents some unique challenges. So, as we begin, I'd like to start maybe a little bit differently. Normally, I don't take tests that are sent to me online, but this one was sent to me, and it asked whether I was a geek, a nerd, or a dork.[567.16][567.16](Laughter) And I must say that it intrigued me enough that I did take the test, and I tested out as a geek. I'm thankful for that in many ways because I'm not a dweeb or a dork, apparently. And being a geek, I was interested in geekisms. And there's another geek you might be familiar with named Steve Jobs. And this quote is one that resonated with me in the process of preparing this budget message. Steve Jobs says, "That's been one of my mantras, focus and simplicity. Simple can be harder than complex. You have to work hard to get your thinking clean to make it simple." And I actually believe that, and that's why tonight I'm going to give you a 645-page budget in five slides. Basically, I asked myself, if I were a citizen and I went to my local library, and this is there now, or I were going online and it's there now as well, and I picked up this Onslow County budget, what things would I want to know? Now, in the past, and actually probably for most of my career, I have tried to focus on giving the governing body that I served, and there have been 13, 14 different board configurations that I've served over time, whether a town manager, assistant superintendent of schools, or county manager, deputy county manager. Anytime I'd give information, I'd always try to give the most and the most complete information. Sometimes that's meant a slideshow of, you know, 50 slides, and thank you for sitting through some of those. But what I have found is that it's sometimes hard to retain all of that information. It's like sipping water through a fire hose. How can we convey simply to the public that's watching this evening what we've been through over six months with literally hundreds of staff? So, right now, I want to cover in five slides what I believe to be the most salient points. And let me also say upfront that in today's Jacksonville Daily News article, it had an article about this budget, there were some errors throughout that article. So, if you hear anything this evening that does not mesh with what may have been printed in the Jacksonville Daily News article, such as students will be getting a 2.36% increase, I would like for you to realize that I'm giving the factual information and carry this with you or do your own research at the library or online. So, let's talk about slide number one. By the numbers. Slide number one, by the numbers. Six months of work, I've mentioned that before. So, what has that yielded us? There were $231.9 million in requests, probably one of the highest levels of request of any jurisdiction I've served in this year. The county budget team did $22.1 million in cuts over the course of time, leaving a $209.8 million proposed all-funds budget. So, what does an all-funds budget means? That means the general fund, which you see on the next line, which includes the property tax, you know, revenues and things like that, and also it means those other funds. We just recognize the airport project as a tremendous airport project. The airport is an enterprise fund. It makes its own revenue. The solid waste department, you know, the landfill, if you will, an enterprise fund, it makes its own revenue. So, if you add all of those departments that make their own revenue up with the general fund, which is the property tax money and other revenues, it's $209.8 million. Take those other funds, those self-supporting funds away, you have $197.8 million. What is that up from last year? It's up 2.36% inclusive of education funding. That 2.36% is the entirety of the budget. It's up 2.36% if you include the increase to public education, the increase to K-12 education specifically. It's up 1.33% if you exclude education funding. Now, why is that distinction important? Because we operate under a public education funding formula, an objective formula that grants the K-12 public school system an amount of money per pupil. And the per-pupil number is always accurate because we use last year's per-pupil number. There's complete objectivity. And we use the state average per-pupil appropriation from all counties in North Carolina. So, that formula says we needed to give more money to the school system, and that plus the other funding increases total 2.36%. Compare those two percentage increases to our population growth. Our annual projected population growth on into 2020 is 2.5% annual growth per year. Now, that's a number. Honestly, if I were many of our agency heads or department heads, I would be quoting that number to the board and to the public. If I were the sheriff, if I were Norman Ryerson with paramedic ambulances that have to respond, I would be looking at our population increase because that increase in population also has a corresponding increase in service demand. We have held our growth inclusive of education funding below the annual population growth. And I didn't come up with that number of 2.5%. The citation to the North Carolina Department of Commerce county profile that gives that 2.5% number is there on the screen. Our tax rate remains unchanged at 67.5 cent for the third consecutive year. We are up in property tax revenues, $1.4 million, but we are down in projected sales tax revenues, $1.5 million. And we talked about that earlier when the commissioners had their first budget workshop. We talked about sales tax projections. Now, we hope that some of that money will be made up as the base expands into, you know, taxation on the provision of services. We don't have any historical data on that. We have some projections, so hopefully that will help. But right now, I have budgeted conservatively. We also have a $1.3 million increase from fund balance, which leaves about 16%. You'll notice it says $1.3 million increase. We're a little over $14 million in fund balance appropriation. Today's paper reported that we were spending or appropriating $1.3 million in fund balance. That is simply the increase over last year's expenditure. So, why would we do that? Well, in North Carolina, we're required to have a balanced budget. Our revenues and expenditures have to balance. I wish that the federal government also followed that as well, but in North Carolina, we have great conservative fiscal policies. And so, that balanced budget means that we are using fund balance to balance, but in the past, we do this every year, as do other cities and counties, we've not had to, for the most part, ever touch that fund balance. So, we put it on paper as a revenue, but we've been able to hold the line and not actually use what was budgeted. Slide one, by the numbers. Slide two, where's the beef? Two pie charts. The first one on the left of your screen, we've talked about before. What are the mandates on county government? Hard mandates, you will do this function and you will spend this much money on it. Soft mandates, you will do this function, but it's at your discretion how much money to spend on it. So, for instance, you will have a jail. We don't care how much money you spend on it. Well, we need a jail that's X number big, X number of beds. Population drives the amount of money we might spend on a particular service under soft mandates. And then you have completely discretionary programs. We do not have to have an Onslow County museum. We do not have to have libraries or parks and recreation, but once again, the public demands some quality of life expenditures. We don't have to have kayak and canoe trails or beach accesses. We don't have to have any beach accesses whatsoever. But we have, as a county, recognized that there's a benefit to investment in those types of things. So, talking about investment, where are we actually investing our property tax dollars? Now, the chart on the left, the pie chart on the left, is percentages. Those are percentages of programs that fall under either discretionary or mandates. The chart on the right, the larger pie chart, we took the 67.5 cents per $100 in valuation that everyone that owns property in Onslow County, they pay, and we're showing you exactly where every one of those cents, those pennies, go. One penny on our property tax rate equals about $1.3 million. But rather than talk about huge numbers, let's talk about pennies. 33.9 pennies go to education. Now, that in this number, we're talking about K-12 education and the community college. We fund both. Health, DSS, Department of Social Services, senior and veteran services, 6.7 local property tax pennies go to those human services functions. And if you look at that, you might think, "Well, gosh, I know we're spending more than just that few million dollars. If one penny is worth $1.3 million, then that's not a lot of money to spend on health, DSS, senior, veteran services." You're right. Most of that funding is coming from somewhere else, from the federal government, from the state government, to Onslow County, in some instances, from grant sources to Onslow County. We're just talking about your property tax and where it's going. We spend 6.7 pennies of your local property tax there. Sheriff's Office and Jail, we spend 7.5 pennies of your local property tax, Sheriff's Office and Jail. Emergency Services, that includes our paramedic ambulances, E-911, emergency management, the people that are active when we're facing hurricanes and disasters, tornadoes, 4.6% goes to emergency services, and once again, 7.5 to the jail. Then if you think about everything else, all of the other stuff that honestly many people don't know we even do. If you think about vector mosquito control, you know, getting rid of beaver dams, vehicle maintenance, we have to service those sheriff cars and ambulances. If you think about the tax office, human resources, all of those other things that government needs, a maintenance department, and of course, parks and recreation, library, museum, all of that is 14.8 pennies. Everything else that county government does is 14.8 cent. Slide three. So, now if you've told us where our money is going, what exactly specifically are the major things that you're looking at spending it on and where have you cut? Because earlier on, we mentioned when it was by the numbers on slide one, that we had a tremendous number of new requests. So, let's just highlight some of the big stuff, you know, the major increases. First of all, Onslow County Board of Education increase that I've already talked about that went along with that funding formula was $1.6 million. That's fully funded. Onslow County Board of Education capital increase, also part of the funding formula, $425,000. And that capital increase portion is, that's the last step to get them to a steady state, $3 million to maintain all of our school facilities, which actually are public assets. We have over 3 million heated square feet of school facilities in Onslow County, and we have to maintain them, as well as the acreage that goes with them. The Onslow County Sheriff's Office and Jail increase, $1.1 million. U.S. Government Fair Labor Standards Act mandated increase, $180,000. One word on that, we have to change how we count those that would earn overtime pay versus those that don't earn overtime pay. And so, that's actually a very recent thing that's just been handed down. We're budgeting for that. It happened very late in the game, but we had not adopted the budget yet, had not put this together yet, so we included the entirety of 12 months expenditure of that rule change in our budget. Our final year of position market adjustment increases, $1.1 million. Several years ago, there were a couple of instances where the county looked at some of our employees and looked at other public sector employers and looked at what we paid people and what they paid people. And just because we're all local and we all love each other, I'm gonna pick on the city of Jacksonville a minute. We had 911 telecommunicators that sat in the same room as Jacksonville 911 telecommunicators because we shared a 911 center. Now, they were two public safety answering points, but they happened to be in the same room located in our emergency operations center. And no farther than from me to the Honorable Neil Yarborough, a county worker would earn thousands of dollars less than a city telecommunicator. And amazingly, not everyone was silent about that. Once in a while, once in a while, someone would find out what someone else made, and quite frankly, we trained people and we lost them. Same way for deputies and Jacksonville police officers. Do we begrudge the Jacksonville telecommunicators or the Jacksonville police officers one cent of what they earned defending us and helping us? No. But the commissioners in their wisdom looked at this and said, "Not only for those positions, but also for our public health nurses, for our social workers, for people that are protecting kids and senior adults and those that can't care for themselves. We are losing those people as well to other communities like New Hanover County." And you instituted a four-year plan to get our base level pays up to be comparable with other employers. And we took into consideration things like experience of individuals and what not just maybe one county was doing, but what seven, eight, nine other counties were doing to really get a sense for the market. And we did not spend hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars on that study. Our HR department conducted that study internally. Over the course of four years, they have conducted that study internally. Now, someone out there might say, "Oh, well, if the HR department did that study internally, I bet all those people got raises." The answer is no, they did not. In fact, some people have been very upset they did not get a raise. In fact, in some years, over 25% of those studied perhaps did not get a raise. But we took an honest look at every position versus what the market was paying. This year, fiscal year 1617, is the final installment in that four-year study. So, it's year four out of four. To study the remaining county employees and place a portion of them where they have to be, it's $1.1 million. And all of the details about all of this, by the way, it's in the 22-page budget message that I've written at the front of the book, and it's all in the hard copy. So, there's a lot more detail, but remember, I'm doing this in five slides. I didn't say how long I was talking in five slides, but... Health insurance premium increase, $352,000 up. We have been able to hold down our cost of healthcare for several years. Quite frankly, the healthcare market is just beyond us this year, and we're gonna have to pay more money in premiums. All of that was $4.8 million. Well, we know that we're not gonna have a tax rate increase. We know that we are both county Board of Commissioners, county administration, and staff, fiscally conservative. So, the only thing to do is to go through and see where can we make adjustments to what we're spending right now to help make up that difference. And that's the part that begins in the red here. Seventeen positions were cut, saving $768,000. We then went in and looked at those things that are perhaps less noticeable but which we still have a major responsibility for, workers' compensation insurance. We were able to reduce that by $600,000. Now, vehicle maintenance, instead of the Sheriff's Office receiving 20 replacement vehicles, they received 10 replacement patrol units, patrol cars, and one F-150 truck. The 10 cars we did not buy saved $392,000. Unemployment insurance cuts, $224,000. Coastal Carolina Community College, I met multiple times with the President, Executive Vice President of Coastal Carolina Community College. They were able to prioritize their request, which originally were over a $2 million increase just for Coastal Carolina Community College itself. And in the end, they're down from last year's budget, $120,000. And also, transfer to capital improvements cut, and basically, that is a fancy way of saying, "There were some things we were gonna do for our own county buildings that we're putting off. We're not going to do some of the maintenance projects through Randy Jones and Assets Facility Management that we were going to do, and we've put those off." That saved $697,000. So, altogether, we took care of 2.8 million out of the 4.8 million right there. And those are not all of the movements, but they're most of the major movements. I can tell you, we operate on a line item budget. So, to go through every line item where we question a department, "Do you need that much in office supplies?" No. Can you do with 150 bucks less in that line item? You're justifying this much, but can you do without this and this and this? We went through every line with our departments. So, there are other savings, and there are other small increases, but they're not of this magnitude. So, those are the major expenditures changes on slide three. But you know, the biggest thing that we spend money on is the human element. Slide four. 61 new positions were requested in this year's budget. 61 new positions. That should tell you one of two things. It might tell a person that doesn't know our department heads, it might tell them incorrectly that department heads are out there just going crazy. You know, "How many positions can I get this year? Hey, how about 30?" That's not accurate. The other thing it might tell someone is, "We have a growing population." Remember that number from the Department of Commerce? 2.5% growth every year. There's over 400 new kids that come to the Onslow County Public School System every year. They come with their families. Their families come and demand services, and those services require a human element for fulfillment. Of the 61 new positions, we're recommending that 14 of them be funded. Detention officers, five detention officers in the Sheriff's Office, two deputies, one heavy equipment technician, which we're seeking funding for through a 100% grant through the Onslow United Transit Service. We want to help service their vehicles, and they pay 100% of the cost of another heavy equipment mechanic. Maintenance mechanic, public safety, Sheriff's Office... mechanic. Maintenance mechanic, public safety, sheriff's office. We know that we've had ongoing and continuing maintenance issues in that very large jail and sheriff's office, primarily the jail. We know the equipment there is extremely complex, many computer systems, HVAC systems. We have spent a lot of time there through Randy Jones' office and Asset Facility Management. Either our existing employees are gonna be pulled off all the other county buildings just to work there, or we need to have a person working there pretty much full-time on that office. And then finally, income maintenance caseworkers. That's another one of those lovely federal mandates. We had been using temporaries. We would hire temps during periods where we needed help. And the federal government has passed a rule that says they have to be government employees. Temps don't count. And we are looking at five of those, but we're gonna be able to recoup, on average, 60% of that cost back from our federal programs. Some of them will be 50%, some of them will be 75, but on average, we're looking at about 60% recouping that back from the federal government. So those are the new positions. We have denied all other new positions requested from agencies. And that also, by the way, includes some requests from volunteer fire and rescue agencies as well for emergency responders. So we're not talking about positions that were requested, you know, underwater basket Weaver one. No. We're talking about emergency responders. We're talking about firefighters essentially, and other very important positions, tax assessors, other people that we've not been able to fund. The final phase of the market adjustment is completed. I mentioned that earlier. 425 positions were studied, and as I mentioned, in this study, for this coming year, 74 receive a market adjustment. And by the way, a market adjustment is not a set dollar amount. It is not a percentage. It is position by position. A public health nurse or a income maintenance caseworker here would be tied to an income maintenance caseworker in New Hanover County, and those two positions compared. And not only New Hanover, but maybe Pender County, and Carteret County, and Craven County, and that area that we lose people to. 26% of the position study this year did not receive any market adjustment whatsoever. They were already paid a market, a fair market rate. Now, for those people that did not receive a market adjustment, maybe they were already studied in years one, two, or three, and once again, I'm gonna mention the sheriff's office, they were studied in year one. They were some of the first people studied. Well, those deputies that are out there on our streets were studied three years ago. If we do not provide a cost of living adjustment, after looking at what other people are doing, and if they are also providing pay increases, then we start that slide backwards again. Other places are starting to advance, and we hold steady, and we're not keeping our salaries up with the market. So for the sheriff's office, they are the farthest away from 201617, so they would be probably hurt likely the most, depending on the market. We're looking at that 1% for those that did not receive a market adjustment. Between 2010 and 17, those cost of living adjustments, all of them together, including this 1% that we're recommending, totals 5%. That's 5% COLA between 2010, 2017. In that same period of time, roughly, 2010 to 2016, the Consumer Price Index for our area has risen 10.34%. Social Security increases have been up 14.3%, just as a basis of comparison. Now, also included in that, because we budget for everyone that gets a paycheck in Onslow County, is also a county commissioner, 1% COLA. Now, that is entirely discretionary. It has been discretionary, you know, it is discretionary this year. What it does, it would average $10.17 growth, gross rather, gross per month per commissioner, so that's prior to taxes. That has been called out as a separate line item in the governing body's budget, and that is available to the commissioners or not, as you choose to take it or not. But just for clarity, there are only two types of people that receive a check from Onslow County. Those people that are staff, which includes myself, the clerk, and every other staff member, and then there are elected officials. Those elected officials include you, and include some other elected officials we pay, such as the sheriff. And so it is up to you commissioners to decide if you want to do that or not. But for all staff, that 1% COLA, and for everyone right now that gets a paycheck, that 1% COLA is included inside of the budget. That's the human element. So if we're not talking about humans, let's talk about infrastructure. And certainly, that has drawn some attention lately, because I mentioned to someone that had just come into the building for the first time, they said, what a lovely building. And I said, well, thank you. It only took us 281 years to get here. And we are very thankful. I mean, we've consolidated from 12 different locations, 12 different, excuse me, 12 different apartments from 10 different locations into one place. We don't drive 15 or 20 minutes to get from HR to finance anymore. So that's been really effective here in how we conduct the day-to-day business and activity of local government. But we're also doing some other construction right now. And as you look around the county and see that other construction, you might say, well, how much will my taxes be going up in fiscal year 1617 for that? And the answer is none. In 2009, our capital reserve fund was created for Onslow County government, and there is no tax increase for any construction projects. All projects are 100% covered by our capital reserve funds. We have two. One is for county government, and also one is for public education. The public education fund was seeded with $13 million that was given up from our Board of Education. So they seeded that fund, and through that, we're now building Dixon Middle School and Richlands Elementary School. Through some great help from our DOT board member, Ms. Sandra Fountain, other members of DOT, and both staff and others of North Carolina DOT, we're getting money for our air traffic control tower, and through the FAA, also giving us money for an air traffic control tower. So county taxpayers, property taxpayers are not going into a lot of debt for that. Our vehicle maintenance, heavy equipment garage is under construction right now, already taken care of, the debt on that. Consolidated Human Services Building and Parking in downtown Jacksonville. Some of this, by the way, you will be doing some budget documents and some financial documents on. All of this is already taken care of through the existing capital reserves, and is in our plan that we have put together. The justice complex evidence room and jail heating and air conditioning package, that's a major repair that we have to do. That is contemplated in the budget. The new Somersil, excuse me, the new courthouse and Somersil courthouse construction. This will renovate the old 1970s Somersil building and add about a 56,000-square-foot courthouse, fronting the river over on Ann Street, that'll take care of our court needs. And then, of course, the very small, fairly minor move of Board of Elections, Senior Services, and EMS stations, but still, we're anticipating about $100,000 of that for those moves altogether. If you put all of that together, as well as all of the other debt that we have, and other county education and construction projects that we've had on the books for a very long time, our debt level is at $156 million compared to a debt limit of $920 million. We are not anywhere near our debt limit, nor do we want to be. We don't want to be at anywhere near $920 million. It would be irresponsible. But what has been responsible is, as we are able to move out of rented space, as we're able to build buildings that makes our service to the citizens more economical, more efficient, we've been doing that over the last several years, and you've been doing it all through our capital reserve funds. So having covered all of that, there is an opportunity to now gain information from the public. Paper copies of the budget are available for review at Onslow County Administration, which is upstairs, third floor, 234 Northwest Corridor Boulevard, and at our public library branches. The budget is also online. It's in the very center of our homepage. It's very easy to find. There's a PDF of it right there at onslowcountync.gov. We ask that written comments be received by June 16. We have a special email address that budget comments can be sent to, as we have in the last several years, and of course, we'll take them by U.S. mail as well. And the address is on the screen, and it is also gonna be scrolling on G10, G14. So having said that, I would like to make a couple of comments in conclusion. First of all, I would like to talk just a moment about innovation. We're doing two things that I believe are fairly, maybe it's not rocket science, but it's things that we could do that would help. Some of it, surprisingly, has been more difficult than you might anticipate. Today, I signed a contract with the North Carolina Department of Corrections to accept inmate labor from Carteret Correctional Institute in Newport. We will get six prisoners for a dollar a day. They'll help out at vehicle maintenance, the landfill, clean ditches, they have to be public ditches, they can't clean people's yards, okay, and also clean out dog runs and things at the animal shelter. A dollar a day for eight hours. Now, that eight hours is inclusive of drive time, so we may only have them for six hours on-site. But if you wanna prorate that dollar among the time that they're working versus riding, we're still getting a pretty good deal. We know in the past, you know, back in, you know, back in the old days, you'd see prisoners working on the side of the road, and you still see some of that today. We wanted to put them to work through an established state program, not creating a program of our own that has its own set of liabilities, quite frankly, but through an established state program where our own employees can be certified as supervisors, and are trained in how to do this work, and bring those inmates to help facilitate. Because once again, we just cut 17 positions out of county government. We need to be looking for ways that we can maximize our service, at least expense. There's something else that we're doing right now, and that is a volunteer citizen support specialist program. Now, what is that? Well, I happen to think, having been adopted by senior citizens, when I was born, the man that raised me, Billy Hudson, was 60 years old. When I was 15, he died. He was 75, and I never thought of him as some old guy that couldn't do anything. He had a lot of talent. And I believe that in our community, we have seniors today that would be a tremendous asset to Onslow County government, and we have other people that might be a tremendous asset to county government that aren't seniors. So why not give them an opportunity to volunteer, to help, to maybe get out of the house, to meet people? And so we're establishing a volunteer citizen support specialist program here in the government center, and perhaps in some other county buildings, where seniors can make application to us, to volunteer. We'll run a background check on them, because we do that for everybody. It's no offense, but we do that with everyone. And then, let's have them come in, three to four hours a day maybe, at our front desk right up here, and greet people. You need to get to the tax office? Well, that's on the second floor. How are you doing today? You know, a friendly face, part of the community, community helping the community. If you walk into a hospital and you see a pink spock, or you see candy strippers, other volunteers are all over this county. So let's employ volunteers in a different and new way to help out as well. Now, we have some innovative measures that are helping. In one of our enterprise funds, we're gonna be putting in Solar Farm, and the commissioners have approved that already. So we're trying to raise money where we can, methane gas, solar, other places. Now, all of this is good news, but I must say that I do have a bit of ongoing concern. And I mentioned this earlier, and that is the fact that we do have this growing population, and this year, we have seen a fluctuation in sales tax. The residential property, or rather, the property tax is the only tax that the Board of County Commissioners has control over. Now, other than if the General Assembly says you can enact a local option sales tax, which we have no more authority to do that. There are no more local option sales taxes that we can enact. In many other counties, we've done everything we can. The last one approved by the voters of Onslow County by an overwhelming majority was a 1/4 cent local option sales tax. You don't have that. You have the property tax. And a large portion of our property tax base is residential property. I believe that as we see a growing population, and as we see our residential tax base also growing, the fact of the matter is, when that new home comes in and is placed on the ground, if that new home has one child or two children, we will be paying more to the Board of Education than the property tax that the county will be getting off that new home. So what is the solution? And I mentioned this during the State of the Community Address earlier this year. I believe that we have to have clean, well-planned, commercial and industrial growth. I believe that we have to continue to make investment and to seek good corporate and business, commercial growth that will add to our tax base. It will provide people a place to spend their money, add sales tax, to work and spend their money, add sales tax, and a property tax base which doesn't immediately generate, perhaps, kids going to school, which is an increasing demand for service. So I believe that one of our biggest future concerns is tax-based development to support expected and required services. In conclusion, I would like to once again thank the Board of Commissioners for the guidance that you have given us. You had a meeting in this room sometime several weeks ago, and you prioritized the things that you wanted to see in this budget. We have met every one of your priorities. Individually, you've also given me feedback. I believe we've met every one of your individual comments and concerns as well, to the extent that we've been able to do so. You were presented this budget statutorily on June 1. You received your copies on June 1. You've had several days to go through it. We have, right now, a called Budget Workshop on the 13th, and all of the department heads will be present there to answer questions the board might have. Our finance officers, our CPAs, our internal auditors, you name it. We're gonna be there to give you information. I know we've also had requests from some members of the community as well to come and present additional information on their request for funding. After the 13th, we would ask that the commissioners consider a proposed public hearing. And that, Madam Chair, is actually the first item under your general items. So at this point, that concludes my budget presentation. I thank you commissioners for the time you've given me to present this, and although it was difficult, I once again want to thank all of the staff, and department heads, and agency heads that really worked hard to figure out how we could save money, right down to the hiring freeze, which to date, excuse me, which as of the end of June, is estimated to have saved about $172,000. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. At this time, I'm going to ask to set the public hearing for the budget on June 20 at 7:00 p.m. in these chambers. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the public hearing set. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Item B is a Resolution 16-6 opposing North Carolina House Bill 1122 that would limit marine net fishing. At this time, I'll read the resolution. Resolution 16-6 opposing North Carolina House Bill 1122 that would limit marine net fishing. Whereas, House Bill 1122 has been introduced in the North Carolina Legislature to put a referendum on the ballot in the 2016 general election, that would limit marine net fishing purportedly to protect saltwater finfish, shellfish, and other marine animals from unnecessary killing, overfishing, and waste. And whereas, net fishing has been a vibrant and successful part of North Carolina's heritage and culture for all of its recorded history, and represents a means by which commercial fishermen create jobs, provide for their families, and contribute to the economic well-being of North Carolina's coastal communities. And whereas, commercial net fishing is a vital part of the economic engine that responsibly harvests fresh, healthy seafood from North Carolina's coastal waters for distribution to American tables. And whereas, existing state and federal regulations provide ample provisions for the monitoring and regulation of commercial net fishing activity, with serious penalties and sanctions for rule violations, which have proven to be effective in preventing unnecessary killing, overfishing, and waste. And whereas, there is no peer-reviewed science to support an arbitrary ban on commercial net fishing, which would have an immediate and long-lasting devastating impact on North Carolina's fishermen, many of whom have no other means to earn a living. And whereas, with the 2016 general election less than six months away, North Carolina's commercial fishermen will not have adequate time before the proposed referendum to properly educate the public about the sustainability of net fishing and the way it benefits North Carolina's economy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners hereby opposes House Bill 1122 and any other measure that would arbitrarily impair the livelihood of North Carolina's hard-working commercial net fishermen. Be it further resolved that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners urges all coastal communities to support North Carolina's working watermen and adopt similar resolutions in opposition of House Bill 1122. That concludes the... That concludes the resolution, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Board, for supporting the opposition to this House bill.
Item C, Public Safety Memorial Nominee Recommendations. Mr. Norman Bryson will present this item to the Board. Emergency Services Director Bryson.
Before I go into reading the agenda item, first thing I'd like to say is, this group this evening that I'll be reading on the item is our first group that we'll be looking at for the Public Safety Memorial. There has been at least another nomination that has come forward recently that the Public Safety Nomination Committee will be looking at later this week, which will bring that nomination hopefully before the commission a little bit later on. Acting on behalf of the local Onslow County Public Safety Organizations, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners commissioned a public safety memorial to be built at the entrance of Burton Business and Industrial Park. The vision and mission of this memorial is to honor the men and women who serve in the public safety profession and who have given the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty for Onslow County and its citizens. In order to properly vet potential honorees, the Board of County Commissioners formed a Public Safety Nomination Committee to meet annually, to review and recommend individuals to be recognized and include on the memorial. The Public Safety Nominee Committee met and has recommended an initial slate of honorees to be included on the Public Safety Memorial. They include Fire Service, James Jones, Homer Waldorf Corporation, Rayford Costin, National Paper Company. I will state that both those individuals were contracted by the Forest Service to fight wildland fires here in Onslow County and died during fighting those fires. Chief Henry Hank Perry, Pumpkin Center Volunteer Fire Department. Firefighter Billy Williams, Roadstown Volunteer Fire Department. Firefighter Brandon Wimpel, Roadtown Volunteer Fire Department. Assistant Chief Colin Gene Thomas, Verona Volunteer Fire Department. Chief Jimmy L. Davis, Sr., White Oak Volunteer Fire Department. Under the law enforcement category, Deputy Jerry Van Barber, Onslow County Sheriff's Office. Officer Terry L. Lanier, Jacksonville Police Department. Detective William T. Whitehead, Jacksonville Police Department. Deputy Steve C. Bohm, Onslow County Sheriff's Office. Captain Jerry L. Scantling, Onslow County Sheriff's Office. The specific action Commissioners were respectfully requesting that the Board of County Commissioners formally acknowledge the recommended public safety personnel to be honored on the Public Safety Memorial. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anybody have any further questions for Norman?
Officer that I called about, is he the nominee for consideration?
He'll be the individual that will be looked at later this week, which I think will be Thursday, sir.
And that was Stephen Black?
That is correct, Deputy Stephen Black.
Now, I don't know if there's any more or not, but these names will be inscribed on the monument?
Yes, sir. All the ones that we have here tonight have already been recommended or have been fitted by national and state line-of-duty death. Mr. Black had not been, and that's the reason we're looking, he's just recently come forward, and that's the reason we're looking at his later this week.
Okay.
Okay. Nothing further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Norman.
Commissioners, for the benefit of the public, before moving to Item D, on the Public Safety Memorial, each individual name is able to be set separately. Because the memorial is a lasting memorial, we hope that we do not add another name. If it is ever necessary to add another name, each individual name can be affixed separately to the memorial. Item D, 2016 Audit Contract. Mr. David McCole will present Item D. Mr. McCole, our finance officer?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. The item you have before you is Audit Contract with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram to provide audit services for our fiscal year 1516 CAFR at a fee of $55,500. The fee has the same amount that we paid last fiscal year. We've been happy with the services that Carr, Riggs, and Ingram has provided us. They know the county well, and they work in an efficient manner, and it enables us to get the audit to the LGC, which is a local government commission, based on statutory requirements by October 31st. And with the use of this firm and working with finance, we've been able to meet that statutory requirement, working with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. So with that said, I respectfully request that you approve the audit contract with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram in the amount of $55,500 to provide audit services for fiscal year 1516. With that said, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Board's pleasure. Second?
Second.
Any questions for Dave? Just, how long does it usually take them to do the complete audit? I know it's not a day event.
Well, they're going to actually be coming by this Friday to go over some of our processes and workflows, and we're, as you know, we're switching financial software system in the beginning of July, the new fiscal year, so we're going to be working with them on some of our workflows and whatnot. But they usually come in right around now, maybe another week or two, and they start auditing human services normally right around now, maybe a couple of weeks after that, and then they come around to finance around September. And then, because we're electronically, we're paperless, we're pretty close to being completely paperless, they do a lot of the audit now, they do it from their office. We give them limited access to our system that enables them to do a lot of the audit work without coming, traditionally, they used to come to our office, give a list of things that we had to pull, and we'd have to go pull the information, and it would take the resources from our office and from the auditing firm, and it would, you know, eventually end up causing the fee to increase, but because of efficiencies, we've been able to keep that fee pretty stable.
Okay, sounds good. All in favor of issuing the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thanks, Dave.
Mr. McCole often doesn't show up until he's getting one of those financial awards, but tonight, he's got five items back-to-back, Madam Chair, so David, if you'll just stay right there and take E, F, G, and H in order.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next item we have before you is Consolidated Human Services Demolition and Parking Lot Project Ordinance. It's in the amount of $3.29 million. This was a planned phase as part of the construction project for Consolidated Human Services. Once the Consolidated Human Services building is complete, we hope to start construction on this project in April of 2017. It entails a couple of things within this ordinance, the first being the demolition of the old Health Department office, once the Consolidated Human Services building is complete, and also the demolition of the Sexton Building. So, in that ordinance, it will cover that demolition of two buildings, and then, once that's complete, there will be additional parking added to the area of approximately around 400 parking spaces. And the work is projected to start around April of 2017 and be completed about six months after the start of the work. And, like I said, the plan is, once the Consolidated Human Services building is complete, is when they can start the work, so it's all contingent upon that, just to emphasize that. So it'd be for $3.29 million, and again, this has been factored into our capital reserve fund and how we're going to pay the debt service for this, and this was part of our planning process when we started with the thought of maybe building the Consolidated Human Services building. So with that said, I respectfully ask you to approve the Consolidated Human Services Demolition and Parking Lot Project Ordinance.
Do I have a motion? In a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the next item that's before you is the Reimbursement Resolution for the Consolidated Human Services Demolition and Parking Lot Project. It is standard practice to have a reimbursement resolution put into place when you approve the project ordinance, and what this enables you to do is to go back from the date that this resolution will be approved, which will be tonight, the county can go back sixty days from the approval of this resolution to recover any costs that were incurred to start this project. If there's any soft costs involved, be it architectural costs or professional services, we could go back to the date of inception of the project. So, with that said, this puts in place that we go ahead and start the architectural costs that are involved to get this project in place. When we go out to the market to borrow the money, which is, we're planning on doing a financing in September, this would be part of our financing in September of 2016, we would be able to reimburse ourselves with the bond proceeds, that would be the result from the sale of 2017. So by having this in place, we would be able to reimburse ourselves. So with that said, I respectfully request that you approve the reimbursement resolution that you have before you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second. Any questions about the reimbursement? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item we have before you is the Courthouse Project Ordinance Amendment. The Courthouse Construction Project Amendment is for $4.299 million. The original project ordinance was passed in August 17th of 2015, and it was for $15.7 million. Keep in mind, when that number was developed, it was conservative estimates of what the courthouse potentially could cost. Now, we have clarity with working with our architects of how much the project will actually cost, and it's projected, including construction costs, finance costs, and all professional services that the complete project will cost, $20 million to complete the courthouse, $20 million in total. So, with that said, again, I want to point out, the amendment, which is $4.299 million, we do have that in our capital reserve fund to pay the debt service on that, so when we go to the market, we will finance the courthouse at, we're estimating at $20 million. But that is covered within our capital reserve. We've crunched the numbers, and the capital reserve fund can more than absorb this increase in the courthouse construction project. So with that said, I respectfully request that you approve the Courthouse Project Ordinance Amendment.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Dave?
This, I have one. This does cover the renovation of the Somersail Building and this $20 million?
Yes.
Yes, it does. Okay, yes, it does.
Dave, let me ask you, we're going out in September to actually do the borrowing. I keep hearing rumors from the Fed on the interest rate. I know we've got an outstanding credit rating. We pretty good about getting a good rate?
I think we're in good shape right now, and maybe unfortunately, the jobs numbers that came out, not to get into much into economics, this past Friday wasn't a very strong number, so that could affect, if you want to look at it from a positive side, you'd rather see more people be employed, obviously, but one of the things, maybe the Fed is going to delay, they were looking at maybe June to raise the interest rates, but then they were, now I think they're kind of wavering. Now, they were definitely going to do it, but it was something that was maybe projected to happen. So I think we will get a good rate. We are using in our capital reserve model a higher interest rate in the model.
Sure.
So, we have that built in if something were to go haywire in a few months, but I think we're, I don't, you can't hold me to this, but I think we're looking at around at least three and a half, maybe three and a half percent, probably less than that. Some of the other agencies, government agencies in the last couple of months have gotten some pretty good rates over those two-month periods.
I've got one other question, I guess this might be for Jeff concerning this. Back when we were building the Justice Complex, we had the plume from the dry cleaning that was under the ground, that it was contaminated. Have we figured into mitigating any of that plume that was migrating from Court Street down towards courthouse, or is that not a concern anymore?
Sir, you don't have to mitigate the plume, but what you have to do is construct in a certain way on top of it, which is what we did with the jail and the sheriff's office. So, we know where the plume is, we've got data on that, and that's not going to be a problem for construction of the courthouse. In fact, we will be elevating the courthouse. One of the problems that we've faced is it's not the old plume from the dry cleaners, it's that there is a new flood insurance rate map that will be in effect at that location. And this is going to, and later on, we'll be briefing the board more on this as more becomes available from FEMA on flood insurance rate maps and the National Flood Insurance Program. But the level, the base floor level of the new courthouse is going to be something like 13 feet above street level of Ann Street. So we're going to make sure that we do not have a flooding situation in the new courthouse, but we also want very quickly to move forward with the project, because if the new flood insurance rate maps go into effect prior to us having this project underway, then the first floor of the existing courthouse, the Somersail Building, cannot be renovated for use. In fact, it will be in the flood zone, the floodway of the new river. So, we're planning renovation there, but we're planning on, you know, for things that can get, well, wet, if they have to, like a big jury pool room, no office space, like right now, we've got the Register of Deeds, and there's a vault there with a lot of very important documents in it. That's probably not the best place to be in a floodway. So this new courthouse project, among other things, moves that Register of Deeds up vertically out of the floodway. So that is a bigger problem that we're facing with the courthouse.
But all of that's been factored into this $20 million?
It has.
Contingency, there is contingency built into the project, yes.
Okay.
I don't have anything else, Madam Chair.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, before moving to the next item, may I make one note regarding the courthouse?
Sure.
In today's paper, it talked about the original design costing $15.7 million, or I'm paraphrasing. Let me say that, just like we're talking about now with some of our preliminary numbers, when the county or any government starts a project like this, we use the best numbers available, but there's actually not been a design. We put things in place, such as the project budget ordinance, the reimbursement resolution, those are mechanisms and financial tools, legal documents, that allow us to begin a project and reimburse ourselves from the proceeds of the borrowing later on, but there's not actually, at that time, over a year ago, there wasn't a set of architectural drawings, and we said, oh, yeah, it's going to be $15.7 million. So, this number that we have of approximately $20 million is after the architects have gone through. So every single project that the county does, I want the public to understand, this is not new. Every time we build something, we have an initial number, then the architects go to work, and after they do their work, and we talk with, for instance, judges and attorneys and people that are in the buildings, so we know what is needed, then we always come back with an amendment such as this, based on better data. So just for clarification, based on the Daily News article today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the, I don't know if you had a, did they vote? Oh, there we go. Okay, we're good. The next item we have before you is called a Preliminary Resolution, and it's pertaining to the four projects we're coupling together and coming to the market September 2016 for the financing we're just talking about. I'll just give you the summary of what this resolution is saying. The first is that it states that the county is considering entering into installment financing agreement for the purpose of providing funds in an amount not to exceed $50,990,000. What is that referring to, that $50 million, not to exceed amount of $50,990,000, is four projects. The first project is the County Courthouse for $20 million that we just approved tonight, the Richlands Elementary School at $24.344 million, the Consolidated Human Services demolition and parking lot ordinance, which we approved tonight at $3.9 million, and we're also doing havoc work at the Justice Complex for approximately $1.5 or $1.6 million. That's what this preliminary resolution is covering, is those four projects. It also states that the county will acquire an interest in the school project, that being Richlands Elementary School, as part of the financing. So by stating this in the preliminary resolution, it gives us the authority, the staff, to work to acquiring the interest in Richlands Elementary School, once it's built and approved. It also states that the county has done its due diligence in whether there's a need for these projects and what the cost is for these various projects. And it also designates the county manager, the county finance officer, and the county attorney to apply, put an application into the LGC and to prepare other financial documents and legal documents in order to get these projects together and be able to take them to the market, which we're planning on doing in September of 2017. And it also states that the board is asking, I say LGC, Local Government Commission, to approve the financing that would approve the financing of these four projects that were just mentioned. And it also says, the board hereby- And it also says, the board hereby confirms, recommends the selection of the parties and professionals that are listed in this resolution. There's two professional parties that are referenced. One is our bond counsel, which is Robinson, Henshaw, Robinson, Bradshaw, and Hinson. And then our financial consultants are, they're, it's called DEC and Associates. We work with that. I think they came down back in April when I wasn't here for the, one of the first budget workshops, Doug and Andrew Carter. They will be representing us as financial consultants, and then the bond counsel, like it says, Robinson, Robinson, Bradshaw, and Hinson. So with that said, I respectfully request that you approve the preliminary resolution, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have pertaining this resolution.
Okay. What's motion for preliminary resolution?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions for Dave? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item I, grant funding for recycling program. Ms. Lisa Ryder, Assistant Solid Waste Director, will be here to present this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The Solid Waste Department submitted a grant application to the Division of Environmental Assistance and Customer Service, which is now the, through DEQ, earlier this year. And we recently received the grant contract and approval letter for the project. The funding was requested to fund a 40R closed-top recycling container and educational materials for our school recycling program, which is a current program. And the total grant project is $10,005, with a local match of $2,021 from the county. We have currently requested this in the 1617 budget year, and our action requested is to respectfully consider the acceptance of the grant contract.
Ms. Saka. Lisa, the, the matching funds that are coming out of the solid waste fund, the enterprise fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Not the general budget?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item J, land offered to purchase. Ms. Laura Jones, our purchasing director, is available to present this item to the board. Ms. Jones.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The county received an offer from a citizen in the amount of $95,000 to purchase a parcel of land located off Old Folkeston Road. It's referred to as parcel number 152059, map number 767-9.14, and it has a current tax value of $94,000. The county acquired this parcel in 2011, and it's just shy of a half an acre. It's about .47 of an acre in size, and it's a rectangular wooded area that actually faces Old Folkeston Road. The statute allows the county to sell property that no longer serves a public purpose and is uneconomical or inefficient, and our standard practice has been to sell the property by the, hold on a minute, under 168-269, which is a negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process. And this process allows for other interested parties to make offers on the property after we advertise it. We give them 10 days to make upset bid offers. And once we go 10 full days without any upset bid offers, then the final offer comes back to the board for final consideration. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners declare the property a surplus and consider the initial offer of $95,000 if approved, and authorize the purchasing director to conduct the sale use in the negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Well, I've got a motion and a second already. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Take the $95,000.
Four more. Item K, airport automobile rental concession agreement. Mr. Chris White, Airport Director, is available to present this item. Mr. White?
Good evening, Commissioners. For you this evening is a automobile concession agreement with Hertz Corporation. There'll be at least one counter space and the associated ready return spaces. This is a standard five-year agreement, the same as Enterprise Holding and Avis executed earlier this year. The airport respectfully requests the Board of Commissioners approve the automobile rental concession agreement for the Hertz Corporation authorized the county manager to sign on behalf of the county.
Any questions about the airport rental concession? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
The next item I have for you this evening is acceptance of an NC DOT grant. I have a check. The Onslow County received notice that NC DOT funds have been allocated for the airport in the amount of $450,000. These funds are allocated to be used for the terminal area redevelopment program. The county will use the money as planned, which will help pay for the terminal construction and associated projects. Matching funds for these projects were derived from pasture facility charges, contract facility charges, federal grants, airport fund balance, and installment purchase previously issued, as well as tenant investments. The Board of Commissioners is expected, or requested to accept the NC DOT grant in the amount of $450,000, and authorize the chairman to sign acceptance on behalf of the county.
Ms. Saka. Any further questions? All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That's the last general item, Madam Chair.
Nothing was pulled off of the consent agenda. Do we have any public comments at this time?
We do, Madam Chair. This is the second public comment period. During the second public comment period, there's a five-minute time limit. In accordance with the board's rules of procedure, Commissioner shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. The first person that signed up to speak is Ms. Ashley Backert of 108 Paton's Ridge Drive, Hubert. Ms. Backert, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and talk with you. The Jackson-on-Slow Sports Commission is excited to announce that we will be holding our 15th Annual Coastal Bank and Trust Jackson-on-Slow Sports Hall of Fame next Thursday the 16th at 5:30 PM at the Courtyard by Marriott. This year's inductees include the late Quincy Monk, Homer Spring Jr., Alice Snead's Ferry, and Benji Taylor. We are also introducing a new award, the Coastal Bank and Trust Hero Spirit Award, which will be given to Ainsley's Angels of Eastern Carolina for their work of inclusion and acceptance of awe through endurance events. I know that this group is very appreciative of all the work you and Onslow County Parks and Recreation Department have done to develop an accessible playground at Onslow Pines for those with disabilities. We will also be recognizing Doug Kidd from Spawnsboro High School for his National Coach of the Year Award, Jason Lukitis for his USA Wrestling Greco-Roman Coach of the Year Award, Captain Bryce Sadoris for his Marine Corps Male Athlete of the Year Award, and Johnny Stevenson for Stevenson Motorsports 2015 IMSA Continental Tire Sports Car Championship. During this ceremony, we will also have Jones Angel, Assistant Director of New Media for UNC, play-by-play announcer for Carolina Football and Men's Basketball, and Onslow County native as our emcee. This is truly an event to celebrate sports, and we hope that you guys are going to be willing to attend and be a part of that. During this event, we'll also be highlighting the achievements of the Sports Commission during the current fiscal year. As we only have 24 more days left in our fiscal year, we've already reached milestones like no other. The Sports Commission is pleased to announce that sports tourism has generated over 5,000 room nights and $4 million in spending, a record-setting year since our inception almost 15 years ago. Since we are funded through occupancy tax dollars, I personally want to say thank you to all the sports tourism visitors that have essentially paid for the Sports Commission to be in existence by staying in our hotels. The services we provide are not funded through anyone's taxes, income, sales, or property, but strictly by those that spend the night in our hotels. So again, thank you to them. Finally, I want to release some great news for our county. The Sports Commission works with event owners from across the state and nation, and we are proud to be their partners. From the International Senior Softball Association, to Color Vibe, to Red Bull Global Rallycross, to Cycle NC coming this October for the first time as an overnight stop, we appreciate their support and trust in Onslow County to host their events. The news, though, is that we have just found out that we've been selected as a finalist for the Mid-Atlantic Regional of U.S. Quidditch, an event that would be hosted in November of this year. As a collegiate regional event, this is the perfect example of the county thinking outside the box and hopefully getting the opportunity to showcase itself as a prime location for future regional championships. Harry Potter fans should be excited about this event, and we look forward to hosting the site selection team soon to help show why, sorry, to help show them why Onslow County should be their destination. Our future is bright and exciting, and I want to thank you all for your support and trust in getting the job of sports tourism done. On behalf of my Board of Directors, thank you again for everything you do for us, and I look forward to updating you on another historic year coming soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's the last individual that signed up for the second public comment period.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you have comments tonight?
I do, Madam Chair. With me this evening is Mr. Neil Yarborough. Mr. Yarborough is the interim Onslow County Attorney, and he is working with us in wrapping up a lot of different, different things that we have ongoing, and also has helped us prepare a very comprehensive request for proposals for an Onslow County Attorney position, rather not position, but the function of Onslow County Attorney, which we are, we're looking for outside counsel. We're, we're looking at sending that request for proposal out this week, and so we'll be contacting local firms, making sure that everyone's aware that they have the chance to present a proposal to Onslow County for that function. But while he's here this evening, and this is the first meeting he's been here, I did want to thank him for his work. He's been working very closely with staff and making sure that we have all of our needs met in our departments. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
I'd just like to make sure the public is clear that this is, this request is not for an in-house attorney, but a retainer attorney. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner comments? We'll start with Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to sit up in my chair and really thank Jeff, thank the staff for six months of all the work that you've put in, and I loved the slide tonight, I loved the humor in it all, and I love the fact that you guys have been able to balance that budget once again, and really provide the public with really making it very clear, so people could really understand what it took behind the scenes and what, what that budget actually looks like. That will go forward, and looking forward to the public comments in that. Secondly, I'd like to publicly thank Pat and Lee Walker with the Vietnam Memorial, and that they have presented us a check this evening. I know they've left already, but I'm quite sure they'll see it on G10, so like to thank them. Thirdly, I would also like to thank Ashley and the work that you have provided for the Sports Commission. And prior to me becoming county commissioner, I watched you diligently work many hours at the Sports Commission, and I see that you are still doing that. And the fact that you're bringing all of these sports to Onslow County, and really expanding and having this sports tourism take off, so keep up the good work. We applaud you for that. Also, and I'm not going to steal all of Paul's thunder tonight, because, but today, we had the honor of receiving a certificate from the North Carolina Chamber of Commerce, and thank you, Paul, because I have two dual hats over here. Lorette knows, she's sitting in there in the audience, as I was vice president of the Chamber of Commerce, worked so diligently, along with Lorette, along with Sheila Pierce of Economic Development, and Ann Shaw, the Small Business Center at Coastal, and dare I not forget Shannon, and the school district. And we worked in collaboration to really get to making Onslow County what is called a North Carolina work-ready community. And this really highlights and positions this community in a global marketplace, because when economic development goes out, and I'm on this thing about economic development for this community, because it's all about getting jobs in this community, and making certain that we've got a work-ready community when they come in to look at Onslow County, that we can expand this county and continue to allow it to grow. So I thank you, all the partners that were there today to receive this award, and Paul and I were there, and I'm really proud of Onslow County in so many ways. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Jarman?
She congratulated and thanked Pat and them for their donation. I would like to just thank the citizens of Onslow County, that the many that have participated in, in providing money for that memorial. It's just been way beyond my expectation. When people found out what we really needed here at last to wind up with, ooh, step forward, and I would, you know, it would be nice to name all of them's names, but I just wanted to thank them all for doing so, and I know there's one or two more out there that's in the wing that's going to donate. They have told me they were going to, and I would hope we're just about to get enough to wind her down, and, and no taxpayers' money. So thank God, nobody can't go out and say we threw away taxpayers' money to build a memorial. I know that's going to be said, but...
Well, I'm a taxpayer, and I paid money, so it's got my, it's got my money.
I did too, but we did it all to charity.
Okay, okay. Thank you, W.C. Mr. Bright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to thank the Walkers for coming forward tonight and presenting memorial monument, a check, and a donation. As W.C. said, we've had many, many, many people has contributed to that, and thanks to the folks that did, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Fountain, for helping us with the airport terminal, and if you had anything to do with this DOT grant, I'm sure you may have had a word or two about that. I appreciate that also, because grants and donations is what makes Onslow County great, and the volunteers that we have. Welcome aboard, Mr. Yarborough. Thank you for your service and stepping forward to help us out, and maybe we can get underway with interim, not interim, but a contract attorney down the road. Appreciate that. We voted on tonight on a resolution, not a resolution, but a procedure with our purchasing to sell a piece of property, and that's money in the bank if the process has started with the upset bid and so forth. Whenever you can get $190,000 an acre for some land, I think it's time to move it, get it back on the tax books. So anyway, that's, that's a plus for us. Other than that, try to weather the storm that's coming, and have a safe trip home, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Vice Chair?
The millionaire said most of it, and not much left to say. But I want to thank, not yet, W.C. But I want to thank Jeff and the staff for all the hard work you've done for the last six months. I know it's been a tough road to put all that together, get the budget to balance out. But another thing that I want, I know the Walkers, I want to thank them, because I've watched them for the last 12 years work so hard on the Vietnam Memorial. But W.C. started something when we were at a meeting here with the J O E D about two weeks ago, and hit Sandra Fountain up and got her interested in the flagpoles, and I want to thank Sandra and Keith, along with Tony Chow, and along with Rob Steele, and my wife and I. We all donated into one flagpole. So I think we're there, Jeff. I think it's almost done. I know that W.C. and Barbara have donated to the flagpoles also, and I want to thank everybody that did that. Jeff asked us what we could do, and W.C. started it, and I think W.C.'s still working on somebody else out in the audience. I won't mention his name right now, but I know that he's working on it.
I'm twisting arms, and one of them...
You got his arm?
Right now.
Well, we'll just shame him right here on television.
But Jones-onslow has done an awful lot for this community, and I want to thank you for that. It means a lot.
Any further?
No, ma'am. It's yours.
Okay. Of course, I love Pat and Lee Walker. I mean, they've just been such great volunteers and, and so generous with their time and their efforts, so thank, thank them very much. I just wanted to say about a lot of what you've heard tonight. Oftentimes, in the financial world, we will, we will bring one thing before this board from the day of conception to the end of the project. Maybe there'll be five or six different times we vote on something, and sometimes we allocate the money, we're talking, we're going to allocate the money. So I know that the public hears these same numbers, and the public, it sounds like we're just spending money like crazy, but a lot of times it's the actual motion to move forward on the spending of the money that we've made a motion before to set aside. So that's, that's where we are with some of these spending projects. Also... Also, too, I got my wind and hail insurance bill today. And, you know, I know the citizens that have their insurance in their mortgages, maybe they don't see it as clear as like when you're just sitting there looking at the, the dollar amount. And a lot of times, I think people might think that the commissioners have raised taxes, and that's why their house payment keeps going up. And, and it's not. It's not. It's the wind and hail insurance. And each year, I toy with the idea of not continuing to carry it. And now we've got a tropical storm, so I guess that tells me I'm going to pay it. But tomorrow is vote day. If you have not early voted, please go out and vote. I know there's only a couple candidates on the ballot, but do not forget to go out and vote. It's going to be rainy and nasty and ugly, but I know it's a worthwhile thing. So if there's nothing further, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? To adjourn? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.